Okay, thank you. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Jackson City Council meeting on August the 13th, 2024 at 10:00 a.m. here at City Hall. First, we have with us Pastor Kenny Lewis of Redirection Church, and he's of Board One, and he is going to come before us and say the invocation, do an invocation for us, immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which I'm going to ask Mr. Hartley to lead us in this morning. Thank you.
Amen.
Everyone, please stand.
Mayor LaBamba, in his absence, I extend my condolences to you, Madam President, you and your family at this time, also board members, Ms. Jordan, and distinguished guests. If you would pray with me. Father God, in the name of Jesus, I invoke your Spirit to bless this council with a oneness of mind, bringing them together today with a shared commitment to serve this community and its people. I pray that you will bless this council with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, as they deliberate and make decisions that will impact the lives of those they represent. Grant them the clarity to see what is just, the courage to pursue what is right, and the compassion to consider the needs of all the citizens of Jackson, Mississippi. May their discussion be filled with respect and a spirit of cooperation as they work together for the common good. Bless this council with the spirit of unity and a shared vision for a prosperous and inclusive future. May the choices they make today bring lasting benefits to this community, and may their actions reflect the trust that have been placed in them by the ones they serve. It's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor, for that lovely invocation, and thank you very much, Mr. Hartley. Okay, so colleagues, we've got not as lengthy of an agenda as we did last time, but we do have several guests and items that deserve our serious consideration today. And so I know that we have guests here from Ice Miller, and we have guests here who are being considered for reappointment mostly, or appointment to boards, and we appreciate them. And we also have Scott Hodges, our auditor, who is here, and if I'm missing someone, please let me know right now. What we're going to do, colleagues, is go ahead, and we don't have many public comments. Yes, yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Any introductions or?
I would like to open and close the meeting in honor of Judge Swan Yerger, who passed away about a week ago and was buried in the Greenwood Cemetery, a real great citizen of the city of Jackson, who served the citizens for a long period of time.
Thank you, Mr. Foot, and I apologize, colleagues. Mr. Banks?
Yes, Madam President, I just want to take the time to first of all, recognize some of the family from Amazing Church of God in Christ that are here, Mr. Clark, who grew up right, well, I grew up across the street from him, and Mr. Stanton from here, and then also always welcome the historic Ms. Alice Tisdale into the chambers, and just want to say again officially for this meeting that our prayers are with you and your family, Councilman Lindsay, and then our prayers are also with Dr. Sophia Amari.
Thank you. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, I just wanted to encourage folks, we're getting ready to start up Jackson State University this week, and if there's any groups out there that would love to put the love and the I love and want to come out and do some cleanups around that area, please contact me or keep Jackson beautiful, especially the sororities, fraternities, church groups, community groups, or just individuals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. Any other comments, colleagues? All right, we're going to jump right into this agenda. We have a public hearing first, and so would the clerk please read item two?
Order requesting the City Council review and vote to approve the signed variance request for Amazing Institutional Church to erect a 32-square-feet ground sign at a 71, it's seven and a half feet in height within a NMU-1 neighborhood mixed-use-one zone, which allows a total of 15 square feet for monument signs.
Okay, this is, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this? Yes?
Good morning. Terry Coleman, the sign and license division. This request is simply the church is asking for a tad bit larger sign for better visibility for the church.
Okay, thank you. We're going to wait till we get it on the floor, Mr. Hartley. All right, is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Well, I guess we should wait till the next one, yeah. All right, is there anyone else here to speak in favor? Okay, please come, please come forward and state your name for the record. Thank you, Mr. Banks.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yes.
In our mayor's ass.
And I'm sorry, would you please state your name for the record?
I will.
Thank you.
And to this council, my name is Ernest Stanton. I chair the deacon board at the Amazing Institutional Church of God in Christ, under the supervision of the Wadell Greer. We are here requesting a variance of a sign that we've been trying to put up for the last four months, and we, it was zoned, rezoned from a R1 to a mixed-use, and we were thinking that we was all right until we had a contract, and he went out to get a permit from the city and found out that it was not zoned right, it was too large. And so we are here asking this council if they would allow us a variance so we can put our sign up, because we've been going through this process quite a while, and all the people that I've text and email, Councilman, I want you all to know that the church appreciate that, especially Councilman Stokes, Councilman Banks, Councilman Vernon, everybody that we have kind of bothered with this sign. We appreciate if you all will allow us this variance so we can get our sign up. Thank you.
Thank you. You explained that very well. I wish everyone did as well, gee, thank you. All right, colleagues, we're going to go in ahead, is there anyone else? I'm sorry. All right, we're going to go in ahead and get item number three on the engine. Read, please.
Order requesting the City Council review and vote to deny the signed variance request for Amazing Institutional Church to erect a 32-square-feet ground sign at a seven and a half feet in height within a NMU-1 neighborhood mixed-use-one zone, which allows a total of 15 square feet for monument signs.
It's not, we're not getting it on the floor yet. This is the, okay, so is there anyone here to speak in opposition? All right, there is none that I've heard, and so we're going to go in ahead and move to item number 19 and consider this item while they're here and we have it before us. Clerk?
Order requesting the City Council review and vote to approve the signed variance request for Amazing Institutional Church to erect a 32-square-feet ground sign at a seven and a half feet in height within a NMU-1 neighborhood mixed-use-one zone, which allows a total of 15 square feet for monument signs.
So move.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments, colleagues?
Yes.
Mr. Hartley and then Mr. Stokes.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Stokes?
Councilman Hartley, I just want to say that this is an example of a church working with the community and government. You know, this church has been the backbone for the Capitol Street near the zoo area. They lost their pastor, but God, who never made a mistake, kept their church united and moving forward. And we're just so glad. We have other churches trying to move out to the city of Jackson. They're trying to be here, and their roots are in Jackson. And Dr. Stanton and Mr. John Walker and others, I wish all of them could have given their names, who hear from this church, because they're spending hard-earned money to try to keep the church uplifted and beautified. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, I just wanted to say, first of all, we certainly appreciate the church's presence and all they do to stabilize the, as Councilman Stokes says, stabilize that area and along Capitol Street. You've got the zoo area, you've got other businesses there, you've got Livingston Park. This church is just standing up and standing strong, and we certainly appreciate that. As a councilman of that area, I see nothing, absolutely nothing wrong with approving this variance, and I encourage my colleagues to do the same. Again, we want to do all we can to support this church and its members there. Thank you.
Okay, colleagues, any other questions or comments on this item?
Banks.
Sorry, Mr. Banks?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam President. Look, colleagues, I just want to encourage support of this as well. This church, Amazing Institute Church of God in Christ, is very historic. Matter of fact, Superintendent Butler used to pastor the church on my family street, which is Maddox Road, Forest Hill Church of God in Christ, when it started, and you know, this church has produced many people, from musical artists and done a lot, and there's no doubt that they will be a staple in that community to continue to do all they do in West Jackson. I do have a question. Madam President, I thought at one time we were looking at, or someone was doing the work to amend our sign ordinances so that we won't have to have people come before us so many times to make sure that our variances, you know, all these variances that we've had, one time we had them one after another. Is that work still going on in the Department of Planning?
And just to dovetail on that, especially in, I mean, this is a neighborhood mixed-use district.
Yeah.
So anyway, I don't know the answer to that, but we can find out. Oh, I'm sorry.
Terry Coleman again. Yes, that is in the ordinance as we speak, because it's an alternative to the signed ordinance, meaning that a business or a group of businesses within this complex could bring this before you one time and get a variance to cover the whole entire shop and sell it.
Okay, so this variance will cover, I understand?
This is more like an individual.
Okay.
Here, but if they had multiple in that area, they could come as one group and have it done.
All right. I guess the question I'm getting to, is there any way to look at or bring any recommendations to this body that would be more befitting for some of the requests that you've been getting over the past years?
Sure, we'll take a look at it, and we'll get back with you on the findings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think, and just to drive that point home, I mean, just to look at neighborhood mixed uses in general, I think it's what Councilman Banks is asking for. Thank you so much, Mr. Coleman. All right, any other questions or comments on this item? All right, all in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. Do we need to take up the next item as well, item 20? Okay, thank you. All right, colleagues, we are now going to go to item 17. Would the clerk please get that on the floor? And I apologize for all the skipping around. I'm just going to tell you in advance, we're going to do some today.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the LaFlore East Foundation and accepting of LaFlore East Foundation's donation of numerous upgrades, repairs, remodels, and installation of various new recreational features to Palm Bridges Park at no cost to the city. When completed, said donation will total approximately $6,930,000.
So move.
Second, we have a motion and a second on this item. Mr. Foot, would you like to make any introductory comments?
Sure, I would love to do that. This is a great item. I'd encourage all my fellow council members to support this item. The, as an introductory matter, I'd like to say that about not long after I got on the council back in 2000, I guess it was 15, I had the occasion to meet with Mr. Palm Bridges at River Hills, and he was really interested at that point in time. He was an elderly man. He had given the land of Palm Bridges, the land to the city for a park purposes, and he was interested in expanding the park and adding some more tennis courts so that Jackson could support more tennis tournaments from people, regional tennis tournaments and all. And I, this is such an exciting development that LaFlore's East has come up with, and the people from the top, not Topgolf, but the First Tee Program, that I can't, I've got to believe that Mr. Bridges would really, really be excited about this development that Mr. Hayes is going to, or Dr. Hayes is going to tell us about.
Thank you. And so with us today is Dr. Clay Hayes, who is with LaFlore's East, but also Jackson Heart, and they have put a tremendous amount of energy and effort and resources into our green spaces across the city. And so, Dr. Hayes, would you like to make a brief presentation about what this is going to be?
Yes, ma'am, Madam President. Thank you so much. I am Dr. Clay Hayes, and I'm a cardiologist here, work at Jackson Heart, and I'm also the chair of the LaFlore East Foundation, and we are excited to work with the city once again with different things. As y'all know, I had a chance to work with the city with the museum trail and also with the Keith Haring Fitness Court, which is in Billhaven Heights. And so the LaFlore East Foundation, I have several board members here with me today. We've got to look into this area, which is a 30-acre park, and by the way, I must thank the city, particularly the Director of Parks and Recreation, Dr. Mohammed's been fantastic to work with, and also with the city attorney, Justin Powell, and Drew Martin. And so we've come up with this concept about how to best do this 30-acre park. Currently, this is the way it exists. It's a tennis facility, it's a walking trail, it's a children's park, but there's also one of the libraries over there that has really been underutilized. And so we thought about this concept, well, how do we connect all these together, along with working with the local businesses? So with the assistance of Councilman Foot, we had a charrette approximately a year ago, and talked to the businesses, the schools, the, all the neighborhoods, city officials, and we came up with this idea of what could we do next? And so we came up with this concept, which we have here, which connects all this, and it, along the same lines that we did with the museum trail, we have two bridges that cross this particular creek, because flooding was an issue, we created a retention pine, and it actually expands the tennis facility, expands the walking trail, and introduces the concept of pickleball. And I know that's a hot and a fast sport that people like in Jackson, Mississippi, and this is the most utilized park in all of Jackson, and we thought, well, if we could do this here with this one part, maybe we have this sort of as a pilot concept that we could do with other parts around Jackson. And this also connects the library, which would be a wonderful place for families to go, and they could learn, and you know, if it's hot or whatever, they can go there and then go across to either play on the park hall facility, or at the children's playground, or maybe at the tennis facility. So this has been a longstanding work in progress. Again, as mentioned, it would be no cost to the city. Our plan is to raise the funds. We've already started that process. We have enough raised to put in the pickleball, and so we just need the assistance with a memorandum of understanding. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any colleagues, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I just want to encourage the council's support of this. Dr. Hayes has been committed to the city of Jackson, committed to creating things that change quality of life and support better health for our residents. That is one of the strategic aims of the city of Jackson, healthy citizens. And so I'm just grateful for his thoughtfulness and want to continue to see this blossom, not only in this area, but across the city.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions or comments? Mr. Stokes?
Thank you so much. Doc, I had a gentleman who called me, and maybe I had the wrong understanding, from trying to speed read this contract. What we're doing, the friend told me that the city would basically be still over this park.
That's correct.
And that y'all would raise funds to improve the park.
That's exactly right. It's an upgrade. What we would do is we would build the facilities, like the pickleball courts, and improve the expansion of the tennis facility, and like the trees and all need to be pruned up, but once we've completed all that, it's back with the city. So the idea is we would not take it from the city, we would help the city improve the park. So that's exactly right.
That's what he told me, but in reading this contract, this language, it said the city of Jackson, Department of Park and Recreation, Number 14, oh, his representatives have the right to enter on the premises during any business day to inspect the project.
That's right. So we would work with Director Mohammed, you know, just like we've done before. We want to make sure that we're in compliance and working with the city. The idea is to have him help us, because like, for example, now they help with mowing the grass and doing some cleanup, and like, we also work with the sheriff's department. We actually pay off-duty sheriff's officers to provide security. We work with the Mississippi Tennis Association and provided cameras, security cameras, and so all we want to do is partner with the city like we've done before, you know, like I've done before, like, say, for example, the fitness court or on the museum trail. So this would be city, this would be city property.
But we're talking only about this partnership during construction?
That's construction, that's right.
Only.
That's right. Once we get it done and, you know, up and completed, obviously, it's the city's, you know, for tennis courts and all that stuff.
Everything is city runs, city.
That's it. It's, yeah, it's, again, it's, you know, it's for the public's use, for the tennis and the pickleball and walking and all that sort of stuff.
All right. I want to make sure we have it on the record then, so there's no misunderstanding.
Absolutely. We want to be clear, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Colleagues, any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hayes, and thank you for taking time out of your schedule to come visit with us today. All right, colleagues, now we are going to go to item 36, which is the item, no, wait, is that right?
It's a discussion.
It's a discussion item. Hang on a minute. Yes, let's go ahead and do that. They are here, and I don't want to take up any more of their day. So this is a discussion item, Ice Miller update. If the gentleman from Ice Miller could please come forward and just give us a quick update on how we're doing with, how you're doing with the lobbying efforts at the federal government level. And please state your names for the record.
Good morning, Madam President. Michael Stroud with Ice Miller.
Jared Lodehold, Ice Miller.
Thank you for making the time, and thank you for taking us out of order. Good to see everybody. And we just wanted to give you and the council a brief update on our efforts in Washington, D.C. We have a PowerPoint that we sent beforehand.
One second. Ms. Jordan?
Can you start talking without it?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
We'll just boil it down.
Wait, oh, we're going to do old school.
Yes, we are. We're going to do it right from here.
And I think we all got a copy of it.
Okay.
I think everybody has a copy of it.
Okay, and we did want to convey our condolences as well.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry to hear about your loss.
Thank you so much.
And essentially, in Washington, D.C., we have a, you know, ongoing effort to submit a variety of appropriations requests. These are congressionally-directed spending requests, and we have done those across a variety of accounts, and several of which include requesting for, you know, library water improvements, and a lot of street drainage improvement areas in particular, which pose a lot of risk to human life, but also property and damage, and property damage that make parts of the city inaccessible. So of particular focus for us is the Queens Area Drainage, Stormwater Drainage Area, the Monument Area Drainage, Stormwater Management, and Midtown Drainage, Stormwater Drainage Area, which we included in the PowerPoint presentation. The request that we made is about approximately $4.5 million, with, when you subtract out the match, that's about $3.375 million that we put in with Senator Wicker's office as well. What we've noticed in D.C., definite incredible downward pressure on the budget and downward pressure on congressional-directed spending. We just, we've seen it across the board, and we think that's not going to be a change. So we just want to mention that. But we are incredibly optimistic about our projects. We think we're going to get some funded. We also are doing a lot with respect to, the other thing we've been doing, the budget outlook, in short, it's an election year, so things will be a sprint at the very end, and it'll be about as clean and as clear as spaghetti, and we will know that in the next probably 30 to 45 days. We anticipate, we do not believe that we probably will have a finalized budget by that point. We think the government will probably operate under some sort of a continuing resolution, which means they'll just pass a little bit more money to keep the government funded past the election, and then in probably November, December timeframe finalize the budget. So we put that aside in there for you, too, so you're clear that that may be, we may not have definitive answers until a little bit later this year.
Sure.
I could stop there if you'd like, or I could go all the way through.
You know, that is a great overview, and we appreciate all the hard work that you're doing, colleagues. Do you have any questions, Mr. Banks, and then Mr. Hartley?
Yeah. First of all, Mr. Stravinsky, thank you all for the work that y'all have done, and it's been a good pleasure to work with both of you all in D.C. and when it comes to the things that we're trying to do federally. I guess my question is, with understanding the lame duck year and the process and stuff that go on with it, some of the programs within departments, specifically USDA, and the initiatives, of my understanding, there's somewhat of a September deadline where they're trying to get some funding out, and I think his name is Leslie Glover, who is the new director over USDA's Urban Initiative, and with Jackson being the only urban city in the state of Mississippi, well, the real only urban city in the state of Mississippi, if there is any way to, instead of just dealing traditionally through Congress, working with USDA, and maybe the Department of Justice, with some of the other things that we try to do to try to get those things done before September?
That's a great question. I appreciate that. One of the things that we also want to highlight is that we have been working with the city's grants team on a regular cadence for all kinds of competitive grants that the city is eligible for. So we are on that cadence to meet with them every two weeks. We are also looking, for example, at rail crossing elimination grant. We're also looking at any other USDA grants that are eligible, Department of Justice grants that are eligible. We're also looking at DOJ and hazard mitigation for DHS as well, so, and cyber, local cybersecurity grants, too. So I think the short answer is we work to address that, too.
I guess a follow-up would be, is that specific grant, is the grants team working on that right now?
Yes. Yeah, when I was up, when we met, the day after that we ended up with USDA, and they had just put Leslie Glover in place.
Okay, okay.
And we're just getting information. So that's one of the things I think that we should deal with, especially now that they have an urban initiative.
And so we meet every Wednesday with the grants team here for the city, and so we'll check in tomorrow and see what the status is of the application. Okay, thank you for his net, Council.
Thank you. Mr. Hartley?
Yes. During your research, were there any considerations to the Lynch Creek watershed?
To the?
Lynch Creek watershed. We have, you know, serious flooding issues over there, you know, Camelot's apartment, up around Robertson Street, Jim Hill High School, other places where.
So what I would say to that is we got a series of projects from Public Works, but what I would say in terms of that project, I don't recall that one being one that was submitted, but any project like that should be a part of the broader hazard mitigation plan that would be potentially funded through BRIC. And I think any of our broader flood mitigation projects that are not included on this list, I think they should all be included in updated hazard mitigation plans so that you can get DHS dollars for it. The earmarks, and I know it's a long, short term for the longer word, but earmarks are one bite at the apple. You've got other flood mitigation opportunities, too, and so on the slide around competitive funding opportunities, that's definitely one that we would be happy to include as a, to potentially be funded through a BRIC opportunity.
I certainly appreciate it, if you would, again, Lynch Creek. If you need additional information, I will, I'll be glad to provide it.
Yeah, absolutely. Let's definitely talk about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, just as a follow-up, not only will that be a priority of Public Works going forward, but prior to Ice Miller, and this was some time ago, coming on, Corey Horton made a submission on behalf of the city for the watershed projects. Tugalu College was approved for their project, and we had not yet been approved, so we would like to reengage. I do want to take a moment before this vote, just to boast on the work of Ice Miller. For those that are keeping track of the city's relationship with Ice Miller, we first came in the office, there was an entirely different team with Ice Miller, and there was a want for more support with that previous team. They've completely remade their team. This is the team that was on the ground when we were fighting for resources after the water crisis. This is the team that hosted a Friday morning call every Friday. This is the team that hosted a Friday morning call every Friday with not only the administration, but each one of our, um, representatives in Congress. This is the team that made certain that I got before the Senate Appropriations Team, uh, in order to make the case for why the city of Jackson, uh, should, should get the money through the omnibus bill. Uh, this is the team that also, uh, talked with Chuck, uh, with Schumer, uh, talked with all of the leadership and made certain that they passed that omnibus bill before, uh, midterm, uh, elections that year. And they ensured that we got that money and they kept into consideration the fact that there may be a shift in Congress, in the leadership. Uh, and so I would, I just say that to say that they're incredibly thoughtful, they're incredibly organized. Uh, they have the relationships on both sides of the aisle. Uh, one of their colleagues is, um, uh, former, uh, Vice President Pence's nephew, right? So it's not just, you know, the, the Democratic side of the aisle, they're looking on, on both sides. And I've actually witnessed the level of respect that, um, they garner in Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is just a discussion item today and we want to thank you both for coming before us today to give us an update. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you so much. Uh, I don't think we have to duplicate, uh, services. Uh, Congressman Thompson has been involved with the, uh, Mega Evers Boulevard. Monies. I know we got the twenty million in. That's supposed to be phase one. I don't see anything in writing. What's the status of the other phases moving from Ridgeway Street up through Sunset and up through North Side Drive? And I still think that it's Congressman Thompson's office who's leading the way, I think. I hope that y'all can verify to make sure, but we, I know the funding did come through them and want to make sure as we meet with engineers and others, they're telling us this, this is just phase one stopping at Ridgway Street. Secondly, Mega Evers Street. Not talking about the drive where we, forty-nine highway, where we got money to make some improvements. Dr. Margaret Walker Alexander Drive is in poor condition. It is owned by the park service, the home. They did something else where we have an outdoor toilet in twenty twenty-four. An outdoor toilet. There's no way that you can be the lobbyists for this city. And y'all can say that the city that y'all work for in twenty twenty-four has an outdoor toilet in Jackson, Mississippi, when people come from Iowa, Nebraska and other places and children have to go to the bathroom and there's no structure built, they gonna point you to. In the old day, they called them outhouses. Now they talking about to-go. City of Jackson shouldn't be represented in such a poor manner that it's a to-go restroom for guests coming. And with y'all being the lobbyists for the city, surely you got to feel some kind of shame, like I feel for the people in my ward. Twenty twenty-four, we don't have a structure built by the United States of America. This is a United States interior situation. Surely they can afford a nice restroom for visitors who come to this city to see Mega Evers home. Thank you.
Councilwoman? Forgive me for-
Thank you, um, Mr. I, I want to see if they have a response, Mr. Mayor, and then I'll call on you. Yes?
Sure. I mean, uh, we, we absolutely would love to work with you to make, to fix that. Um, we've not had the direct conversation with the NPS about the actual restroom facilities at the location. So we'll work with you on that. And I guess the question is, do we have engineering estimates of how much it would cost to do the full renovation that is needed at that, at the location?
You know, those good questions. Then what we're gonna do, uh, within the next days, we're gonna appoint Margaret Walker Alexander son to be, uh, what we call the Ward Three, uh, leader.
Okay.
To make sure that steps that need to be taken in terms of development in the area and everything else will be done. We still do not want to overjump the Congressman. Congressman Thompson got us some monies, but I'm saying somewhere down the line, somebody went to sleep.
Yeah, so, so I guess what I want to better understand and I want us to have the conversation is for the money that has been, has it been, is it in the account? Is it ready? Has it been drawn down? For the money that is already?
This, this has not been a city, uh, initiative. Um, and it is my understanding that that work is being done in phases in order to facilitate this national park. Uh, so I don't think that we're talking about what is a complete phase. Uh, we have been in conversations with the park service. They've had charrettes and discussions, uh, at the, uh, Mega Evers Library. Uh, and so we can certainly pick up the conversation to see what their ultimate goal is, uh, with the restroom facilities. But, uh, I think we're in phase one.
Okay.
Uh, one, I won't say phase one, but we're in the early phases of what they ultimately plan on doing with that, that park.
Okay.
Well, we want to work with you on that one and for sure. Cause you, I, we agree, a hundred percent.
Margaret Walker Alexander's son would be the one contacting you.
Please, and I'll give you my personal contact and call me anytime.
Thank you.
That's great. Well, thank you. That's, and, and, uh, Mr. Banks, and then we're gonna wrap up and move on.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, uh, uh, counsel my folks to my colleague, uh, when it comes to that, the, the, the things that you were just talking about with Mega Evers facility. I think it would be real good if we could get those recommendations to the legislative committee so that we could put it in the form of a resolution and then the city also make an official ask in support of that officially through, in the form of resolution that we can go and get, uh, voted on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Banks. And thank y'all for being here with us today. I'm sorry we had a technical difficulty. If any of the media would like a copy of this PowerPoint, we have it. We can give it to you.
One last thing, inside, inside joke, uh, that my wife has, uh, how is everything in Sparta? And, and we'll talk about that later on. All right.
Alrighty, thank you. All right, guys, we still have some guests in the room that we need to, um, probably like to get back to their ri- ri- their real work. Um, colleagues, we're gonna move now to item number eleven.
Order appointing Jennifer Welch to the Planning Board of the City of Jackson.
So move. We have a motion and a second on this item. Um, colleagues, um, Jennifer was a member of the planning board and, um, just had maybe a year off. And so she's really, I consider her like a reappointment because she served for a long time. And Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for putting her back up again. Um, what I would like to do is just have one, one opportunity for questions. If it becomes clear that we need to do a second round, I'm happy to do that. But, um, uh, uh, Mr. Foot, do you have, oh, wait, Mr. Mayor, would you like to make some introductory comments?
Yes, uh, I am, uh, happy to offer Ms. Uh, Welch for appointment to the planning board. Um, she is an invaluable, uh, asset to the city of Jackson. Uh, she is heavily invested in the city of Jackson. Uh, she has, uh, a number of rental properties. Uh, she also has a rental center, um, in the downtown, uh, area or, or near the, the, the Bell Haven, uh, community. Um, and so I think that she is, um, an, an important addition. Uh, the question has been raised and I think that it is a, a valid question. Um, and, and I'll just go ahead and put this on the table, that, that she has, uh, a stated opposition to our rental registry. For me, um, I think that she has the right to oppose things and, and whether the city is in agreement with her position or not, I, I think that she's still a valuable asset. Uh, she, she would not be the first person that worked with the city that, that took issue, right? Uh, my father became mayor. Guess what? He sued the city of Jackson on, on some occasions before he became mayor. Uh, so I don't think that that, that, um, should be determinative of her position. Uh, she is someone who clearly loves Jackson. Uh, she is someone who's clearly invested in Jackson and, and, uh, I'd ask that you support this appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna start with Mr. Foot. Mr. Foot, do you have any questions?
I have no questions, Ms. Welch.
Thank you. Mr. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you so much. Um, I'm trying to speed with your bow right quick, but I had the chance to go into, um, Regions Bank Downtown. And I think they say you own property, you rent a property in downtown Jackson. I had no idea the poor condition, the escalator not working, uh, it's pretty much empty. You know, as a planning board member, what would be your goals to help in downtown Jackson get back on its feet? It's all right. We, we'll talk offline. Thank you. It's all right. Thank you. It's all right. We'll talk offline. Thank you. Thank you.
Been for an interesting conversation, Mr. Stokes. Okay, uh, Councilman Brazil. Uh, Mr. Hartley?
No questions.
Counsel, uh, uh, Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I, look, uh, Jennifer, you have done great work in the community. Uh, and there have been times when, uh, we fought on the same side with several things that are important. However, I, I want to just stress and I'm not trying to sway in any way. I just think that when the city acts, uh, and when there's a passionate call to deal with some of our problems. And one of the problems have been that we have had poor kept, uh, poorly kept rental problems. I mean rental properties. In addition to that, I think we all know the studies about fifty-four percent of this city being renters. Um, there's also studies that support most of your urban or your black cities are, uh, in the same condition. Uh, and most of those rental property owners are not of the, um, you know, either they're from other counties. Uh, you're different. You're from right here in Jackson. But there are a lot, if you look at, they're from Rankin County, Madison County. And there was an uproar, uh, when it came to us trying to do the same thing Clinton did, the same thing the city of Madison did, the same thing the city of Richland did, and whose fines and fees are a whole lot higher. Um, and, and the problem is, when we look at historically, what has happened to Casa Grande, what has happened to South Down Arm, what has happened to the, uh, complexes that Kansas, that Councilman Stokes was talking about? We look at all around and then you go and look at those, those ownerships. And then all of a sudden you have rolling LLCs. One day it's a company or a law firm or a rental company and Pearl that owns it. Then when we pursue them, it rolls to a company in Madison. And at the same time, residents suffer because there is no accountability. And what we try to do, uh, and what we are trying to do is make sure that the quality of life here for every citizen is not only above board, but to, uh, make sure that when properties are being kept up, that somebody's holding those rental agencies accountable. And that Jackson just doesn't become the next city where everybody targets to get rental properties and basically make money, uh, off of people who are struggling anyway. You have a company named Conrex. I've said their name millions of times. And it's hard to get property in northeast Jackson because Conrex owns over two thousand properties right here and they're single-family residential homes. These are properties that someone can get on the market eighty, ninety, a hundred thousand dollars, but to take advantage of people who don't have the creditworthiness and then charge them fifteen hundred dollars, sixteen hundred dollars a month, and then they don't have to have a rent, or, or a registered agent that can be held accountable. These are some of the things that we're trying to stop and why it might not be a problem as much in certain areas. It has been a very, uh, 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 it has been a, 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 a pain in the neck of citizens in South Jackson and citizens of West Jackson because we have seen these apartment complexes. I know that Rig meet. I got friends in, in, in Rig, but at the end of the day, enough is enough. Uh, I don't understand the opposition, but, um, it does give me pause, uh, when we are trying to do something in the best interest of the city, uh, that people would dare have the audacity to stop us from tightening up our laws when it's basically taking advantage of poor folk and then not do the same when Madison did theirs. Not do the same. I think Madison fees are what, five thousand? Not do the same when the city originally did theirs, but when Jackson does, does their law. Uh, to try to, uh, because you wouldn't never have that going on in Madison. You would never have that going in those other cities. But it's allowed here and when we try to tighten up the laws to do it, there's pushback and problem. I have no problem with some of the other things that you've done, but with that, it takes pause. Uh, I would like to know your stance. I would like to know why the opposition. Um, this might not be the platform to get into all of that. Uh, but unfortunately because of that, I can't support because I would like to see, uh, people on a planning board goals aligned with trying to push more homeownership. Uh, and not only that, where, you know, whenever you take that type of opposition, it, to me, is just the same as the company from Rankin County that keeps floating its LLCs. Although they are good actors, when it comes to ordinance, instead of coming to the table saying, let's help make this better, but just to take opposition so that we can't have a stance and helping to produce some of the things that we want to see for our great city, it does, uh, give me pause. Uh, I yield, Madam President.
All right. Thank you, um, Mr. Banks. Um, was there, was there a question? But y'all are gonna talk offline? Is that, okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Uh, are the colleagues, are there any other questions or, um, for Ms. Welch at this time? All right, hearing none. All in favor? Opposed?
Abstained.
So it is a vote of, it's two in favor, two against. It fails.
Abstained.
Wait, what were, who voted in favor? One, two, three. Okay, it passed. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Madam, point of honor.
Yes, thank you.
It fails. You have to have a majority of the quorum present.
That is true. Okay. So it failed. Thank you, Mr. Banks.
Madam President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
My concerns are major, but I do not want this to have to take time to come back. If you bring it back up, I would not be in the room to vote one way or the other.
I, I would take a motion to reconsider. We have a motion and a second to reconsider. All in favor? Thank you, colle- opposed? Okay, thank you, colleagues. It passes. The motion to reconsider passes with a vote of four to one. All right, all in favor of, uh, the item before us? Oh, we have to read it again. I'm sorry. My brain's not working today. Go ahead.
Order appointing Jennifer Welch to the Planning Board of the City of Jackson.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Um, colleagues, any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed. It, it passes with a vote of four one. Thank you, Ms. Welch, for your service. I appreciate your being willing to come here today and for being willing to serve on the planning board again. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, colleagues, we're gonna go now and we are gonna get to public comments, but I'm trying to, um, get these, uh, appointments out of the way very quickly. Item number, as quickly as we can. Item twelve.
Order authorizing the mayor to reappoint Alec Lawson to the Jackson Redevelopment Authority, JRA Board.
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this item. Is Mr. Lawson here? I haven't seen him. But he is a reappointment, colleagues. Um, any questions or comments about for, uh, well, about Mr. Lawson's appointment? Mr. Mayor, would you like to comment first?
Like I say, he's not only a member of the board, he is the, uh, board chair. Uh, so he has the respect of his colleagues. Uh, he also works with Hope Community Credit Union. Uh, and much of his work is in the, the area of, uh, development. Uh, so he's highly capable and informed. Uh, I receive updates from the, uh, JRA every month. Uh, I recently received an update, uh, from the group that initially won or has won the first part of the Ferris Street development, uh, to get an understanding of what some of the delays are. Uh, I don't think that that is due to the hard work and effort of the Redevelopment Authority. Um, and so I've, I've asked that you support him, uh, and all of, all that he brings to the redevelopment of the city of Jackson.
All right, colleagues, given that Mr. Lawson is not here- All right, colleagues, given that Mr. Lawson is not here and that he is a reappointment, unless there's any objection, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote. Um, all in favor? Okay, discussion, Mr. Stokes.
Madam President, the, uh, address that they have, uh, and I don't know if it's changed, two, two, four. This is on his VDA, Cedarhurst Drive, that should be Ward Three. But I think they got it.
He is Ward Three, Mr. Stokes.
Yeah.
He's the Ward Three appointment, or so I understand.
Yeah, that's what I thought, but I saw somewhere reading this stuff that it said like he was representing Ward Two. Um, my concern is that I, I just don't see enough of his efforts, uh, in Ward Three. Uh, now, I love Hope Credit Union, please don't get me wrong, and I do anything I can for Hope Credit Union. Uh, I believe that his qualifications are second to none. But in Ward Three, we have some powerful fights going on. One of us witnessed here not long ago concerning those house from the Melika Mall. We're trying to save a Melika Mall. We do not want that Melika Mall to become Metro Center. Now, he got to get in the game, he got to put some skin in the game, and he got to get involved. And I can't support him if he's not getting involved.
Well, Mr. Stokes, since this is the Ward Three appointee and he is not here, my inclination is to table this into the next meeting and we can see if he can get here.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, all right.
I'll table it.
All right, all right, who, let's see, who made the motion?
I withdraw my.
Who made this second? I did, okay, I remember my second, I withdraw my second, sorry, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to item thirteen.
Order authorizing the mayor to reappoint Charles Taylor to the Jackson Redevelopment Authority, JRA Board.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item, is Mr. Taylor here? Mr. Taylor, hello, welcome, please come to the podium and, um, we will let the mayor introduce you first and...
Uh, yes, this is a reappointment, uh, just like I spoke of Mr. Lawson. Um, Charles has been doing an amazing job, he has not been on the board quite as long. Uh, but his term has expired and, and so, uh, we'd like to see him be able to carry forward his work. Uh, he really does not need much introduction. Uh, he's been instrumental, uh, in supporting the city on a number of efforts, uh, whether with his work with NAACP, uh, I believe he's done, I don't know if he's a part, but he's at least associated. He may actually be a part of One Voice, um, and a, a number of other initiatives. So I ask that you, uh, support Mr. Taylor, as he has supported us.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, um, this is a reappointment, colleagues. Um, uh, I'm just gonna say, does anyone have any questions or comments? Mr. Hartley?
Yes, uh, first of all, I'd like, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
For being on the board, doing the hard work. Um, and I, just your appointment aside, I just wanted to ask the, if I can ask the mayor, Ward Five has, uh, has, uh, Mr. Washington, I was wondering when we could see his reappointment to the board.
So I had a conversation with Mr. Washington, uh, we talked about it. I actually was expecting that it was on this agenda.
Okay.
Uh, and I'm not certain whether that was an oversight or...
Perhaps a next one.
Yeah.
Thank you, again, thank you. Thank you for your service, sir, and thank you for doing everything to help our city in this area, appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, colleagues, any other, um, questions or comments, Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, uh, Madam President, I, I've seen Mr. Taylor so many different places, Mr. Taylor, I, I don't remember all the places. But you be around a lot of different activities and everything. And, uh, we're proud of that, we're proud of your involvement and I can't tell you where, but I know I see you and I get a chance to kind of speak to you and everything. Uh, some years are back, uh, Mr. Tisdale was fighting for Ferris Street. They got lights up, now the lights are down. He did everything in his power over the years of his life. Can we not move Ferris Street from discussion to reality? When they developed downtown Jackson, they went down Ferris Street and part of that development was people's family homes, and they need some help today. Could we look for your leadership to get this ball rolling and become inclusive? Because it got to help a lot of these mom and pop businesses in that area. Now, when I say peoples, that means we got to treat Collins the same.
Absolutely, uh, Councilman, so I agree with you wholeheartedly. I think Ferris Street represents the heart of the city. And, um, you know, one thing I'm appreciative about being able to be on the board and the other, uh, board members as well as Chairman Lawson, is that Ferris Street is something that we are all, uh, dedicated to making sure that one, we do our due diligence, two, it, uh, returns to some version of its glory days. So, uh, I agree with you wholeheartedly, Ferris Street is, um, Jackson wouldn't be Jackson without Ferris Street.
Thank, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Uh, colleagues, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? It's unanimous, thank you, and thank you for your service, we're very grateful to you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
All right, yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
On the first page on item twelve.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I want to read it, say, whereas the term has inspired for Ward Two representative.
Yes, sir, well, we've tabled that and we'll make sure that gets fixed before the...
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure other members...
Yes, sir, we'll make sure that gets fixed, but thank you. All right, um, all right, I'm gonna move now, I'm sorry, Mr. Hodges, I'm gonna take public comments next because I'm really concerned that those children may be connected to somebody who's trying to do public comment. And I am extremely sympathetic to mothers who have babies. And so, not that they're offensive to me at all, they're not, I think that's the sound of our future. But which, uh, which item is, um, which, which mother has the children? I'll go ahead and take you first, your name? Okay, Calandra Davis, and then was there one, one other too? All right, all right, we'll go ahead, all right, so colleagues, we are now...
What's your name?
What's your name? Oh, two, three, and four, oh, Anthony, okay, thank you, uh, Ms. Jordan. All right, we're gonna go ahead and start with public comment. Please keep in mind respectfully that, to keep your comments to three minutes. And state your name clearly for the record. And so with this now, it's, it's, you're Calandra Davis, is that correct? And this is, she lives on, uh, Lexington Avenue, and this is concerning water turnoff.
Right, all right, Calandra Davis. All right, so my family and I just got back from the Jackson Water Offices because we went there to ask if there was a process for speeding up the application process when they turn off the water. Um, and if there, if there was a process for speeding it up for households with elders, babies, and disabled, um, folks in the home. We called several times yesterday, we called several times today. Um, they told us that there was no office for people to come into. They didn't tell us anything about appointment or anything. And so then we found out where the office is located, we drove to it. I'm gonna give the very short version, security came out before we could even get out the car. Um, at some point, a gun was drawn on my husband while my children were there, um, by the security guard. Then Ted Hennifin came out and he asked us, it, it's so really in a threatening way, saying that we could get the water back on tomorrow, or we could get the water on, uh, or it could take a lot longer with the way we were acting. Um, he effectively threatened accessibility to water, which is a human right. I know that the city claims that they have no say-so whatsoever in this process, and I understand that that may be true. I also understand that the meter is on the city sidewalk. If we, as a family, decided to monitor that meter and prevent it from being tampered with by the federal government, will the city come for us, or will the federal government come for us? If, sorry, go on to the next page, I wrote this. Um, if there is, if the city has no process as it pertains to how the water is turned on or turned off, or the application process. Um, if there is no process that ensures that the most impacted and the most marginalized households are made a priority. If the city has no say-so, no power, or no idea, no idea on how this can be fixed, then can the city ensure the safety of us who choose to not depend on the Jackson Water Company for access to our water because we can then access the water in our own hands?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, uh, I thank you for coming forward and sharing, uh, your, your experience. Um, I want to be clear that we, as a city, do not condone, uh, the use of, of any threat of violence to residents who are simply trying to get, uh, answers to the issues pertaining to their water. Uh, I think that it is important that you come forward because there is a single narrative going forward. Um, while we're grateful for any improvements in our system, uh, in fact, we've done a lot to get, get the resources, the money, so that there can be improvements to our city. Uh, when you get eight hundred million dollars, it should be a little better, right?
Right.
Uh, but at the same time, uh, we have to make certain that the work going forward is equitable, uh, that the consideration of how people are dealing with the challenges in their own homes, uh, is prioritized. Uh, and so what I would like to say is that we're going to be having a community meeting that looks at these issues, uh, of water, and a part of that community meeting is also re-envisioning where we go from here. Uh, the time is fastly, is swiftly approaching on us, where we talk about what is the next step in this process. And I want to see community members there to be a part of the discussion, uh, and the formation of where we go from here. Thank you.
Yeah, in, in, in that vein, uh, I hope if there is a way, uh, that all those public comments that we've had specifically for this issue, that we can find them and archive. If you could put this in writing, ma'am, uh, and if you do, send it to our clerk or to Melissa or somebody. If we can archive all of these because, you know, I, I think that these are points that are very, that the EPA needs to hear.
Yeah, well, well, without speaking out of turn, I think that the EPA is very much in tune with this discussion. Um, and, and I, I want to, to be clear that, um, there was a want for improvements to the city when the city of Jackson had it, right? Uh, but we also need to make certain incorporated in that narrative is that we didn't have the benefit of eight hundred million dollars when we were trying to work through those challenges, right? And so as we carry this narrative, this isn't about bashing anybody, it's not about not wanting their success, right? But we need, just as, as, uh, the media was very in tune to the challenges that were going under the city's leadership, we need you to give a fair narrative of, of where this is with the community right now. Regardless of whether they pay for a million dollars worth of comms in order to push the narrative while at the same time not paying the city of Jackson the money that we need just to handle garbage services and, and coming up for reasons why they can't pay us the money that we need. And so when things like that are being impacted, we need to make sure that there's a fair narrative universally, uh, when we talk about what's happening with Jackson Water. Uh, again, I'd like to see you there, I know who you are, I know that you're, you're, uh, community oriented, so I anticipate your presence, uh, but we, we do look forward to hosting that meeting for our residents because we're hearing day after day, council members are hearing day after day about people's water bills, people that don't get, uh, their calls responded to. And sometimes we cherry pick those that it's going right for to drive a different narrative, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you. Ma'am, how do we help you get your water on? All those other things we need to deal with, you got three babies.
That's a great question.
They need water.
They did tell me it could be till today or tomorrow. But again, as I said, we were effectively threatened that it could be a lot longer, so I'm, I am, I'm here because I don't know. We, we came here after we left there.
We, we will follow up with a conversation, I'm sorry, Councilman Stokes, but I, I neglect to say this, we will follow up with a conversation. Uh, on the other matter, I'd like, uh, Chief Wade to talk to you about the other matter.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
This lady, two rows back, Ms. Alice Tisdale from the Jackson Advocate newspaper, could you talk to her? And sometimes if the Advocate call, sometimes they can, listen, we can try to get these babies some water. I know, I, I look at your babies and it bring tears to my eyes. Because, you know, it's, it's a beautiful thing. It's beautiful to see a family doing what y'all doing together. And, uh, it's gonna be, if it take money and different thing, I think a lot of people were trying to make sure that these babies gonna have water. So make sure, please, that you talk to Alice Tisdale, so we can try to get that water on today. Thank you.
I appreciate you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Daddy.
Chilaris Smalley, did I pronounce that okay? Uh, is here to talk to us about a shooting. Please state your name for the record and...
Chilaris Smalley.
Thank you, please continue.
Yes, ma'am, we've been trying to get some support and someone to be able to assist us with shooting and drive-by shootings that have been going on, on two zero four Pine Line at our address. And we haven't got any assistance from JPD, it's been hard trying to get someone to help us with this matter. We didn't been on the news, we didn't call the FBI, we've been talking with the investigators, and my kids stayed there, we all stayed there as a family, and it's steady occurring, and we can't seem to get no help from anyone to assist us with it.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, Madam President, the issue, when they say help, they know who's doing it. And they feel that these people all at least be arrested and, uh, somebody in some kind of law enforcement environment talking to them. Because they feel like, they think they had a green light to shoot up a home and do all kind of threatening people because I think they said some to the effect that they coming back and, and those kind of things. And, you know, when the people come to the council, sometimes they get a little nervous and they don't say everything they, they want to say and how they want to say it. But it's nobody's talking to the person who's doing these things. And because they not talking to them, they feel like they can do them and it's okay, they got the green light. And that's how it is to somebody, I don't want to say poor neighborhoods, I want to say neighborhoods where you got thuggery. If this person say he gonna come and shoot up your house and come and shoot it up and he's not arrested or taken downtown, he'll come back again. And they scared for their life, they scared that they're gonna shoot up the house and one of them babies gonna get shot or killed, or one of them gonna get killed. And they trying not to take Madison in their own hand, they didn't tell me this, but I'm just saying. Where they have to get weapons to protect themselves because their house has been shot up, I think, one time? Four, how many times? Four times. Four times. And... And when they come, they come in there, talking about something, they ain't talking about what's going on, they'll shot the house up. And y'all know who shot? Have y'all signed the name affidavit against those, the person who shot it up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, uh, I'd like to, first of all, I want to state my, my regret for the threat and the circumstance that you're dealing with. I would like to point to Chief Watts, who's right there, he's over patrol. Uh, please share with him what, what these officers have, have said to you and, and talk to him about your experience so that he can coordinate a strategy to deal with this. Uh, Chief Wade is out of town, uh, due to, uh, the Jackson Police Department trying to support, uh, after the loss of an officer in, in the state of Mississippi. So I'm certain Chief Watts will, will listen to what you have for him, uh, and work, work with you, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, and God bless you and your family.
Thank, thank you so much, and I'm sure Chief Watts will, y'all can talk in the hall. Thank you. Thank you for coming before us today. And Anthony Smalley, uh, is, is that, you're the same, okay, thank you. All right, um, Levon Williams, talking about building Jackson and J-Train.
Hello.
Hello, Ms. Williams.
Hello, Ms. Williams.
Okay.
Ms. Williams, would you mind adjusting the mics so we can hear you clearly?
Okay.
Thank you, and state your name for the record, thank you.
Ma'am, Levon Williams. Okay, I was, Union Station, um, there are things that needs to be done. Uh, and things that is just kind of inhumane. Um, Union Station needs to be clean, pressure washed, sanitized, trash emptied, and trash... bags replaced every day. Roads need to be repaired so people won't trip and fall. Broken iron seats needs to be replaced, and people shouldn't be bathing there, some say people bath there. Covers need to be put, placed on everything that need to be covered. Buses need to be cleaned and sanitized. Buses, we need more bus drivers. Citizens needs to work, need to get to work on time, some arrive at work two hours late, and if it's true, they say, they ought to know because they be there, that other cities, law enforcement officers drop off mental ill and drug addicts in our city. If they continue, the state needs to give funds for refu places for these people. Now, I want to say some things, if y'all don't mind, I thought I had put down about rebuilding of Jackson, and I've started, I wrote some things, but I listened to what you all were saying, and see what the thing first we have to do is like our foreparents did, because we are a city of faith, and the thing begins with us ourselves. We got to come together as our foreparents did, and people in the Bible, come together and repent of our sins, and then pray and ask God to give us ideas and understanding to rebuild this city and to unite the people of Jackson to come and volunteer to help and rebuild this city. Let me see, we know where we live, we know who, where we are, we know our history, but we gonna have to rise up and come together as a people, and to rebuild this city, and we have to restore the broken hearts. See, these people are doing all these evil acts because their hearts are broken, and they have been taught wrong, and it's the church's fault. Have a blessed day, in Jesus's name.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Williams. All right, now we have it for us, I'm sorry, is it Bettisstein Robinson, is that, did I say that right? I apologize if I just butchered your name.
Bettisstein.
Bettisstein, sorry, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Bettisstein Robinson, and I live at 2611 Glen Street. So, back years, they said that the property next door to you, you'll be able to purchase that property at a reasonable price. I called the planner's office, they said they was giving investors the first opportunity to buy the properties. Okay, now, I woke up one night, the house burned up in flames, in fire, now I got a property sitting next door to me, my mother has a property, we in South Jackson, she has a property that the group company bought it, but now it's just grew into her property, trees fell on her house, trees done fell on my property, that is a house in here, and it's abandoned, squatters been in it, and burned it up, now it's just sitting there as a nuisance to me. And I'm trying to keep my property up, but then I got this in here in my face every day, and I was willing to buy the property at a reasonable price if they would sell me the property, but now I got the property just sitting there. I mean, and his squatters all the time come in these properties, and next thing we know, we have a fire. Then we are threatened, maybe our property is being burned up or whatever, you know? And half of the time, the insurance do not want to cover nobody, if something fall from somebody else's area, the insurance don't want to pay for it. So we are stuck, we're trying to get this off our property like my mother right now. The tree fell from somebody, from the property next door, and our company owns it, but they don't keep it up. So why sell something to somebody and they don't keep these properties up? If the properties are sold to people or sold to companies, they should be made to come clean those properties up. We shouldn't have to be sitting here looking at a nuisance every day, and they not cleaning their properties up.
You so much, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. Bettisstein?
Bettisstein Robinson, yes.
Can you kind of calm down and let the public, let these councilmen know, when you have those fires, how those trees be crackling, and you be worried about the fire spreading to your property?
Yes.
Can you kind of tell about that, please?
Okay, the trees, I don't know, it's the beetles or whatever they say goes in the inside and eat these trees up. So when the trees get rotten, then they fall on your property, your insurance company's not paying for that, you know, we have to pay for that. So I want to know why that if the property is sitting there, and you willing to try to work with the city to own that property and try to keep that property up, why we don't have the opportunity to get that property?
Okay, now, I think legal, and I hope legal, I think what they were trying to do was if city owned the property, then the city would be first priority, and I hope legal will research it, but it was set up for city-owned property. Was this property you're talking about owned by the city, or was it probably owned?
No, it's, it's probably owned, well, they say they sell, well, one company that my mother, that by my mother, it's a, it's a company investor came in and bought the property. But now the property that sit by me, it was a homeowner that owned the property, but I called him about the property, so he said he was gonna get back with me, he never did. And I feel like if he owned the property, like I told him, if you own the property, you should come by and clean the property up, you should keep the property clean, so he never got back with me.
Could we, Madam President, I know Councilmember Foot had identified over a thousand some properties owned by the state, but the city did have ordinance, and I hope we'll revisit it, where if it's city-owned property, I hope we can also get the state involved, that first priority will go to the property owner. Now, that's the law that we had, and I hope we'll find out if it's still on the books or what else, because that's when they came up with Rethink Jackson and Rethink Mississippi, and all of a sudden, these property owners, like she's saying, she hears it on TV and everywhere else, that if you next to these properties, you have first priority given. And so even though there was property, she is saying, that city property, these people who owned the property, they ended up now, so I saw they don't want to tear down or anything else, but I hope we'll research the law, we give us two weeks, and hopefully you'll come back, we can let you know the status of that law, but it was a law that we had.
Thank you, and we have your phone number.
Madam President.
So we can be in touch with you as well, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, so I've been informed that the planning department has already demolished two properties on that street, that M D Q is doing environmental assessments on some of the other properties for their demolition, so we look forward to getting to that. We have talked about that prior ordinance that allowed for that to happen. The majority of derelict properties are in fact owned by the state, so we do need the state's support in order to do that. Many people think that the city owns these properties, but most properties are lost through a lack of paying taxes, and that's when it goes straight to the state. So we are keeping that in mind, and Chris Gray is gonna get with you to make certain that we have those properties recorded from you.
All right, I thank you all.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, this concludes our public comments.
Madam President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
We got Mr. Jackson and Ms. Jackson were here on the item that you stated would be back on the agenda today concerning the ten thousand dollars for their car being torn up, hidden, I don't know, a pothole or cut or whatever, but it's not on the agenda, and they were looking for it to be on the agenda, because they said it would be on the agenda for.
And I'm not clear on why it's not on the agenda, Mr. Stokes, but are you saying you want to add them to public comment?
Well, I think they want to speak, even if it's not on the agenda.
Well, I know that I had a conversation with legal this week, and I think if anything, I think it would probably be better if we had maybe a solution, or at least an idea about a direction. We're happy to hear them again, I don't mean that we won't, but I would like for, could legal opine on this situation?
So in order for the city to process a claim, we'd need a little bit more information about what happened, including the nature of the accident, how it occurred, and what damage the vehicle was done. I know that there was an invoice that was presented at a previous meeting that was the value of the car, but I don't know that we had receipts or records showing what work was performed on the car, whether it was total loss, that sort of thing that we'd ask for in a, in a normal routine investigation. What I'm told from risk management, based on information we received, is that this was a, not a pothole, it was a utility cut by Jackson Water. The city, I understand there's some disagreement amongst some people about this issue, but legally, the city's not responsible for a damage that was caused by another entity, in this case, Jackson Water. There is a Jackson Water claims process, it's probably not quick, and I don't know if it's sufficient, I can't speak to that frankly, but there is a process they've created, so I guess we would want to know what the status of that is as well, I think some people were reaching out about that. Beyond that, that's really all I know about the claim at this time.
My first question would be, are the streets still Jackson?
Streets, the streets are Jackson's, Councilman Stokes, but there's pretty clear case law that the city is not an insurer that all streets will be safe at all times, that's not how the legal liability is based.
Well, the issue must be citizens in this city being put first. To have a situation where you sending citizens back and forth between the city and another entity, and these poor people will not have any transportation, that's not right, that's what I'm seeing in the city. If you're saying that it's Jackson Water, then you should help represent this city and these citizens, and telling Jackson Water that you did this, and liability should be on you.
I'm happy to help with that, yes, sir.
I hear you saying it, but it's not being done, and these people are not gonna, they are poor people who not gonna have any respect, who keep begging for help. They don't come to the city hall just because they don't have anything to do. They are poor people without any transportation, who's in this city going from point A to point B and end up almost getting killed. It's not right, it's not right, it's not right, and it's not right. So now, if there's something going on between Jackson Water and the City of Jackson, y'all iron that out, or y'all can keep fighting, but don't let the citizens be the one who being put in the middle of a fight that they have nothing to do with. They're being punished for no reason. So tell me a win-win, how these citizens can get their money or their car, they don't care, just tell me how, so they'll know what to do instead of coming up here like they begging. And this is just one group of citizens, maybe you have an idea of what need to happen, but I see the letter, and I thank the man so much for the letter he's sending to him, but you know, and I know, nobody's finna pay just because of this letter. What's the quickest manner to get these people made whole?
Thank you, Mr. Stokes, and thank you, Mr. Morton. What I'm gonna suggest is that y'all have a conversation this week sometime, and see if you can't get, you know, a definite step by step, what they can do.
I'm happy to do that, Council President, just to be clear, though, the decision to pay the Jacksons something based on the facts, I currently know them, would not be a legal decision, it would be a policy decision.
I understand, I understand, thank you.
Make sure, Madam President, that what he's saying is that it's up to this council.
I heard him.
I think the governing authorities make those decisions, yes, sir.
I heard him, I heard him. And so, thank you, all right. I think we have had, I think this has been discussed enough today, thank you. All right, so that concludes public comments, colleagues. We are moving now, I apologize again for all the skipping around, but Mr. Hodges has been very patient. We're gonna move now to item number twenty-eight.
Order of the Jackson City Council, authorizing the city council president to execute the audit engagement letter with Tan Russ and Brown P L L C as set forth in the Mississippi Code annotated section twenty-one dash eight dash thirteen-two for said firm to provide auditing services for the City of Jackson State tort claims funds for the year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? It carries with a vote of five zero, thank you. All right, item number twenty-nine.
Order of the Jackson City Council, authorizing the city council president to execute the audit engagement letter with Tan Russ and Brown P L L C as set forth in the Mississippi Code annotated section twenty-one dash eight dash thirteen-two for said firm to provide auditing services for the year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item, colleagues, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Carries with a vote of five zero. Thank you, Mr. Hodges, thank you for your work, all right? Now, we're gonna go back, colleagues, to the regular agenda. We now are at, I mean, I'm sorry, a consent agenda.
All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
We have a motion and a second. Colleagues, I'm assuming there's no reason to pull any of these out? If not, all in favor? It passes with a vote of five zero. We are now moving to the regular agenda, and before we take up claims, I just want to tell you, colleagues, that we do have three emergency items today, five emergency items. We have five emergency items. We're gonna go ahead and get through claims and payroll, and then I'm gonna take up, we're gonna consider adding those items to the agenda before we get much later in the day. All right, claims.
Order approving claims appearing at pages two, five, oh, two, inclusive thereof on municipal docket of claims in the amount of five million, seven hundred sixty thousand, three hundred and three dollars and forty-five cents for, and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So move.
Second, we have a motion and a second on claims. Mr. Malinbecker, would you please go over larger claims for us?
Good morning, today, Alice Malinbecker, CFO. The following represents the four largest claims on this docket. They are as follows. First is U.S. Bank in the amount of nine hundred sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred sixty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents, paid out of fund three fifteen, convention refunding series two thirteen A. This is for the twenty thirteen G O bond interest payment, September twenty twenty-four. Second is Richards Disposal Incorporated in the amount of eight hundred fifty-one thousand, paid out of fund nine, landfill private garbage collection, this is for trash pickup. Third is Regions Bank in the amount of six hundred fourteen thousand, seven hundred forty-three dollars and nineteen cents, paid out of fund four, tech fund, this is for the twenty twenty lease payment, September twenty twenty-four. And the fourth is Wicker Construction Incorporated in the amount of three hundred fifty-nine thousand, five hundred thirty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents, paid out of fund three seventy-two, modernization tax, this is for sanitary sewer maintenance repair.
Thank you, Mr. Malinbecker. Colleagues, any questions or comments about claims?
Just one, Madam President.
Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. Doctor, could you get us a memo concerning this Richards garbage strike, potential strike? We're getting calls, I'm trying not to do public hearings or anything else, but knowing who we request something through you, and it may not be your area, we gonna get a response. We have something right, so we put it in our file, but we don't want to get called, you know, without knowing. want to get called, you know, without knowing anything. Is this strike feasible? Are they bringing in people out of New Orleans like we've been told? We need to know what's going on so that the council can respond to our people and our walls. Thank you.
All right. We'll do so, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, Ed. Along that same line, I'm getting phone calls, and I was able to verify several last week. Richard's disposal hadn't been picking up mattresses and some other furniture items. I think that's within specifications in their contract, so could you just kind of remind them of that specification which we're paying for?
Absolutely.
And we really want to clean up the city, and that could be a big aid if they would just do that part of their contract. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments on claims, colleagues? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Carries with a vote of 4 to 2. Thank you. All right, payroll.
Order approving gross payroll included payroll deduction claims number 305712, and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second on payroll. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor? Carries with a vote of 5-0. All right. Now, we're gonna, colleagues, I think let's go ahead and just bite the bullet and deal with these, let's see if we have the votes to do this, these emergency items. I only have three. I don't know what the other two are. What, Ms. Jordan, why don't you just tell us what they are?
Okay. Shannicki, you join clerk of council. I have one additional item, number four, in my hand, for a portable chiller for J-Train.
Okay.
The other one, I think Mr. Wright just said that Ms. Attorney Carrie Johnson is bringing copies for the fifth one.
Okay, so we don't even have that yet. We'll wait till later in the agenda, then. We'll wait till they all get here at one time. All right. Somebody let me know when the, can someone just let me know when it gets here? And I just don't want us to get way down the road and then forget to do them. So, all right, item number 14.
Order authorizing mayor to execute an office space lease agreement with Jackson HMA LLC for the Jackson Police Department for a term of two years for the sum of $0.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, any questions or comments? We had a good discussion, I think this was, no, yeah, we had a good discussion about this in work session. Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I know that we talked about this yesterday, but just, I know that we're dealing with the gas, electricity, and water, and there's zero cost. I guess my question is, won't this building need fiber?
Assistant Chief Patrol Wendell Watts, the building has fiber in it. We may be able to use the infrastructure of it to connect to it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, and I just want to pause and say thank you for this very generous contribution to the police department. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. Chief Watts?
Yes.
This is really thinking outside the box, and it's something that's truly, truly needed. Could we look at similar ideas with the Jackson Medical Mall?
Yes, sir.
And I think they will provide, I'm not speaking for them, I haven't spoken to them, but they would provide space, but that way, the issue of safety would be a non-issue because they'll see police officers and the police department present, and we might keep trying to save them all, but this is really thinking outside the box.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none. All in favor? All right, great. It's a vote of 6-0. Item number 15.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a temporary use agreement with Raymond Investments, L L C, for a police substation for the Jackson Police Department, pre seat one, for a term of 12 months for the sum of $0.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. We also discussed this in work session. Any other questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none. All in favor? It's a vote of 6-0. And again, we want to thank Raymond Investments for their generous contribution to JPD. All right, item number 16.
Order authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the United States Department of Veteran Affairs, G V Summit, Sunny Montgomery, VA Medical Center Police, and the Jackson, Mississippi Police Department for their inter-agency coordination for requests for law enforcement emergency assistance.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Did you get that, Ms. Jordan? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none. All in favor? Thank you, colleagues. Vote of 6-0. We've already done 17. Item 18.
Order authorizing the mayor to renew Environmental Systems Research Institute, Inc., services for the Department of Planning and Development.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? I think we talked about this yesterday, too, didn't we, colleagues? Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
I'm gonna abstain with that, but.
Okay, it's a vote of five in favor, one abstention, Mr. Stokes. All right, we've done 19, 20, 21.
Order ratifying purchases and procurement of services from one vendor and authorizing payment to General Williams D B A C G C W Pavement Services.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments, colleagues?
Yes, Madam President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
What does this entail?
Can someone, Mr., is Mr. Keaton here? Can someone answer, Mr.? Oh, there you are. Mr. Keaton, Mr. Stokes, ask, what does this entail?
General Transit, yeah.
Can, Mr. Morton?
It's all right.
Is it okay? Well, it's okay. Well, he can, could someone just get Mr. Stokes a memo?
Counselman, I think all, this is simply ratification of the demolition of a bus shelter. So, the bus shelter bench that was at state mortification, it was about $700.
Okay. And I was just gonna ask, were they supposed to have more than one vendor? But it's fine. This is fine.
Christine, can you speak to that, please?
It's all right. Thank you.
Yes. Do I need, do I need to speak to it?
Go ahead, Christine, if you don't mind, counsel.
No, no.
Go ahead, Christine.
Were you supposed to have more than one vendor that you got a quote from?
No, sir. The price of this was only $700. This was a vehicle crashed into three or four vehicles, and we had to remove it immediately. It was dispersed all over the street over on the Mid Street.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments on this item? All in favor?
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Oh, wait, what's wrong?
It's good if y'all, I was just gonna let the councilman know, because of the price being less than $5,000 is why they didn't have to bid it, based on this one.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? All right. All in favor?
Abstain.
It's a vote of five in favor with Mr. Stokes abstaining. Item number 22.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a professional service purchase order request for G C W Pavement Services, L L C, for the installation of trash receptacles in the new bus shelters throughout the public transportation system, J-Train, for fiscal year 2024.
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments, colleagues?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hartley.
Yeah, and I applaud the, Mr. Keaton, I applaud the, you know, the efforts to move the trash receptors, reduce litter, et cetera. I have a different type question, though. Perhaps you can make a note of it. Bobby Rush Boulevard, there's a bus station, there's a bus stop there. Any way we can look at putting some type of covering over it? I have a lot of folks from that shopping area, and they're waiting on the bus. That would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Keaton, we really need some seats throughout this city, and I don't know how much that would be if we had to look at doing it in two years or three years, but, you know, people standing, older people, they can't, then they sitting on the ground. We got to get some seats. Not what they did years and years and years ago. They did advertisement, where the companies would put the seats up, and they could put their advertising.
Right.
But we, I don't, I'm not suggesting that, because I don't know that, but we got to get some seats out here for these people at the bus stops.
I agree, and we just looked at Down Highway 80, how there are no bus cover and no bus shelters down Highway 80 as well. So, definitely making a note of that, and to have a conversation with Christine at J-Train about acknowledging it, addressing it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Mr. Hartley?
Are there any grants or anything out there for those type of equipment?
I'm sure it is. Again, that's dealing with J-Train. I'm learning a lot from Ms. Christine in that regard, but we're definitely having those conversations.
It would be good if we, you know, just automatically, and this summer has been ridiculously hot. We have folks out there standing in that hot sun, waiting on a bus, trying to figure it out, got groceries in their hands, et cetera. So, perhaps if we can look at a grant that we can apply across the city, that would be great, and make everything, everything, you know, similar. You know, we have basically the same type structures at all stops.
Right.
Thank you.
I agree. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none. All in favor? Vote of 6-0. Item number 23.
Order declaring parcel number 409-157 as surplus property and authorizing the sale of the parcel pursuant to section 21-17-11A2 of the Mississippi Code.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments, colleagues?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Mr. Keaton, are there any plans for this property? And the reason I ask, I know it's a lot, but it's on Oakland Avenue.
My minority business development manager, so the applicant family owns the properties on both sides. There's a land extension for this.
Okay, that's what we were talking about earlier.
That's right.
Being able to make sure these families can, yes, ma'am. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor? All right, passes with a vote of 6-0. Item 24.
Order authorizing the mayor to submit to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development the city of Jackson's 2024 One-Year Action Plan of the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, any questions or comments?
Yes.
Mr. Hartley?
Is this proposed plan, is it online or anything, where the public can view?
Yes, it is. It's on the city's website, under Planning and Development.
Okay, and it's, just look up 2024?
Yes. If you go under the Planning and Development page on the website and scroll down, it should be visible.
State your name for the record, please.
I apologize. Reginald Jefferson, Housing and Community Development.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. All right, colleagues, any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor? All right, it passes with a vote of 6-0. Item 25.
Order ratifying emergency procurement of repairs to the Willie Morris Library by J&amp;J Associates, Inc.
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, any questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes?
The libraries, Mr. Wright, do we foresee during this budget year that we will have some funds to the libraries that's down, to bring them back up, to get our libraries in a stable condition?
Sure. Louis Wright, C A O. Yes, Mr. Stokes, we are looking at our libraries and for this budget period, as well as some grant opportunities through Ice Miller on the Richard Wright Library and some others. So, we are working toward that. This particular agenda item is, Willie Morris is not down. We had some water damage a couple of years ago, and this is to do the repairs of those water damages at Willie Morris. We do have plans for air conditioning system at Mega Evans. As you know, we did put a temporary air conditioning system in there for the summer, so we are working toward bringing that library back up, and there'll be some other repairs made as well.
They need to pat you on the back, Mr. Wright, because Mega Evans was, it was just hot, hot, hot.
Yeah.
And y'all did some things where you cooled off the main branch where people, you know, really reading books, and with fans and other things, and the other part is not as hot. It's still kind of, but that's better than being closed.
Right.
Because these, these young people need these libraries, and they need them tremendously. And that's why we thank y'all for going
You're welcome.
beyond the call of duty, because you could easily say, we could wait, and all those things, because it's still kind of hot. But that's, and what you say, am better than ain't. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Hartley?
Uh.
You're okay? All right. Thank you. Mr. Foot?
Thank you. Now, has this work already been done, or is it gonna be done?
The work is going to be done.
Going to be done. Okay.
It has not been completed.
And so, the, what's the source of the $86,000? Which account or fund does that come out of to do that work?
We have found funds to do that. I don't know what account it's out of, probably our regular, what do we call it, the facilities, maintenance.
Is that right? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, colleagues. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor? It's unanimous. Oh, well, no, it's 6-0. Thank you. All right, item 26, which I understand will need an amendment.
Order ratifying emergency procurement of repairs to West Street, South of Woodrow Wilson Avenue.
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. In the proposed amendment.
Yes, we need to just substitute the contract that is attached with the contract that you said. The only thing that's changed is the date of the contract. When we processed that, this is a small contractor, and when we processed, we had to get the contract signed so we could get his bonds, and when his bonds came back, they had a date, they were dated prior to the contract's date somehow, so we fixed that. We redated.
So move.
We have a motion, second?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second on the amendment as proposed by the city legal department. All in favor? All right, we now have the item before us as amended. Colleagues, any questions or comments?
Question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
What's the exact location that this work is gonna take place?
It's directly in front of Canopy Children's Home, and there've been a number of cars there that had hit this dip, and literally caught air and left the road and crashed through their fence a couple of times. They've repaired it on their own on more than one occasion, actually. But it's right there, sort of between Mills Saps on the left and Canopy on the right.
The warranty is over, because they supposed to have taken those dips out years and years ago, and said they did it to burn. Now, there's another small dip in that left lane, right there on Woodrow Wilson, in front of the highway building for the state.
Right.
Could we get someone to, people who are not knowledgeable and they driving, get that dip, and they're gonna destroy their cars for somebody else, because that's on Woodrow.
Need like a warning, a warning out there of some sort, or a repair or both?
Someone to fix it. Yeah, you can put a sign that say dip, and they'll let them know that someone to fix it. And finally, Mr. Wright, could we get some cleanup and some lines? Football season right around the corner, and, you know, it need to be beautified somewhere, you know?
Sure. To address your first question about Woodrow Wilson, there is a rured project that we're working on that's going from I-55 all the way to Mill Street, and that will help straighten out that dip that's in Woodrow Wilson as well. We will look at getting some lines, you know, street markings there so that people can see where the lines are and lanes are. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none. All in favor? All right, the item passes 6-0. Item 27.
Order authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Schindler Elevator Corporation to provide routine elevator maintenance at the J-Train Administrative Maintenance Facility at 1785 Highway 80 West, Jackson. at seventeen eighty-five Highway eighty west, Jackson, Mississippi.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Case of vote of six zero, and then the, uh, final item, please.
Order authorizing the contribution of funds to various organizations to reduce the likelihood of violence-related injury and death in support trauma recovery and healing across Jackson and authorizing a mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the entities receiving funds.
So move.
We have a motion and a second, colleagues. Any questions or comments on this item? I understand it just came out of committee. Yes, Mr. Stokes?
Could I get the committee report on that, please, uh, in terms?
Well, you, you will, we will do minutes, Mr. Uh, stop with that spice, the minutes?
Just the chairman speaking about it or telling what's up?
Okay, thank, thank you. Uh, Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I, I know we have time, I know we push for time because we have some discussions, but, uh, Mr. Stokes, Keisha is right here as well, and I'm sure she can inform you on those, those things you might have concerns with or if you want an overview for.
Please.
Yes, Keisha Coleman, the Executive Director of the Office of Violence Prevention and Trauma Recovery. And what we would like to do is allocate these funds to community-based organizations who are in Jackson doing the work of community violence interruption and inter- intervention.
I think that's the item that we had some on our desk. There was three different companies, right?
Yes, sir, it's Operation Good of Mississippi, uh, the Jackson Office, Strong Arms of Mississippi, and Living with Purpose.
What's the overall goal?
The overall goal is to reduce the likelihood of death, uh, by gun violence or injury by gun violence in the City of Jackson, as well as target and be very intentional about reaching the youth who are high risk for either being perpetrators of, uh, gun violence or victims of gun violence.
Madam President?
Uh, yes, who, who calling her? Oh, there, Mr. Griselle.
Uh, Ms. Coleman, do you have an extra copy of the?
I do.
Okay, I know Councilman Stokes likes to read and, you know, I'm, I'm chair of that committee, and I don't want to, I want to make sure that he has what you've given us. And I think Councilman Stokes, that will answer all your questions.
Oh, right.
Perfect.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I, I regret I missed that meeting, so thank you. I would also like the information as well. All right, any other questions or comments, colleagues?
Will they give us, this is years? How many years? Is it one year, two years?
One year.
When will we get an update on this success of the chart?
Okay, go, go back to the mic.
Uh, the office plans to be very transparent, so you will be getting quarterly updates on the, uh, success and the areas that we're focusing on, as well as the outcomes, um. We're gonna partner with Jackson Police for data, EMS, and hospital-based data. So we'll use those metrics to compare what's happening now as opposed to what's gonna happen when we start implementing the program.
So we will, it will be data driven?
Yes, data driven.
Okay.
All right, good, thank you. All right, thank you for asking those questions, Mr. Stokes. All right, and we appreciate you being before us today, Keisha. All right, any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, it passes six zero. All right, colleagues, we have a stack of emergency items, and I think y'all all know how I feel about this. So, um, I'm going to, who can come walk us through? Uh, before I call for a vote, I want everyone to understand what all this is. Who, is there any one person or are there several people that can walk us through all this?
Ma- Madam President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
I'm just trying to figure out which emergency items do you have?
I've got three from the Parks Department. They got, I got yesterday, and honestly, I was just handed a bunch of them, and I do, I haven't had done to read them, so I don't know what they are.
So I was, at the beginning of the meeting, I have one from Human and Cultural Services. Uh, I don't know if that's a part of what you have in addition, so I, I hadn't had an opportunity to talk with you because you were conducting the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Banks. Those of you who've had a chance to look at it.
That's five.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Banks.
I'm missing two and three.
On what?
One, two, and three was all in one thing.
Y'all pardon us for a minute. Um, we, we've got to take a minute here.
You just got one? I think we kind of got confused. I probably passed my two and three down too.
Yes, let's go ahead. Well, we, we need to get them on the floor first. We've got, all right, this, I just need somebody to run through the list of what is before us, so everybody knows what is coming.
Okay.
Of all of them. So whoever's next?
So, so go with yours.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Hu- Human and Cultural Services. These are the parks. Here, I have that extra one.
Madam, Madam President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes?
While we're waiting on, uh, uh, different departments to have information, I would like to take a second uh, to say that, um, I miss, uh, Councilmember Lee. I enjoyed sitting with her next to me. I enjoyed all of the, all of the knowledge that she would give and tell me different things, and I, I just want to put on the record that I respect, uh, Councilmember Lee, her family, her uncle, her grandfather was the one who, who, uh, taught all the neighborhood kids baseball. I went to college first on a baseball scholarship. And, uh, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. All right, um, yes, um, thank you. All right.
Madam President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mr.
So after, uh, Dr. Mohammed goes, uh, Director Scott is on, is on the Zoom.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Doctor Scott is on the Zoom to talk about her item, uh, and then we'll have someone from, uh, to talk about the J Train issue right after that.
Thank you. You're just gonna run through and list up for us the items that you have before us today?
Yes, ma'am. Abram Mohammed Parks and Rec, uh, the first item will be, uh, for the immediate repairs of three of our lawnmowers, uh, that went down in the last ten days. Uh, these lawnmowers are specifically, uh, located at our golf course. Um, we have been using our maintenance department, uh, to, after they finished cutting the parks, that run over and tried to maintain the golf course, uh, because these lawnmowers are down. We need to get these up immediately. We have two tournaments that will be taking place in the next three weeks, um, as well as the regular maintenance that's needed for those, uh, lawnmowers. So we need, uh, definitely approval for that. The second would be, uh, for the, uh, for our grant that we received through the state, uh, for our go-kart grant that we have located out at Buddy Bucks. We're on a timeline that we had anticipated, uh, for this and the, um, item that will come after that that we're discussing have been on, um, the previous, uh, council agenda, but for whatever reason, uh, it did not make it at that time. Um, but we need to, uh, get this approved so that we can get the necessary, um, uh, measures that we're doing out there in terms of, um, widening the track, putting the fence down, um, clearing the areas. Those things need to be done for the report, uh, that has to be turned in for the state to keep that grant suffice is due on the, uh, by the twenty-third of this month. And lastly, is for our national, um, uh, conference, um, that we attend. And that national conference is takes place once a year. It also maintains our certification, um, for, uh, the certifications that we have throughout Parks and Recreation. Uh, this is to meet, uh, we had anticipated this last, to be on last council as well. Uh, this is to make the early bird special. If we do not make the early bird special, which is due, uh, yes, sir, thirteen hundred more dollars, and I can think of a whole lot more to do with thirteen hundred more dollars than to pay for the conference that we already anticipate to attend. And that would conclude a summary of the three items that, uh, we would like to make.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Banks?
Yes, Madam President, I move that we add items one, two, and three, as stated by the Public Works Director, to the agenda.
We have a motion and a second to add these three items to the agenda. Colleagues, as you know, we need a unanimous vote to be able to add them.
It's three. I said three.
You said three.
How many was it?
He said three.
Okay.
I said three, right?
All right, these are the items just dealing with Parks Department at this point in time. All in favor of adding them to the agenda? Okay, we have a unanimous vote. Thank you. So will the clerk get the item number, emergency item number one on the agenda?
Order requesting payment of registration fees to the National Recreation and Park Association for its twenty twenty-four annual conference for various Parks and Recreation Department staff members. Said registration fees for non-members includes membership and N R P A.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Um, uh, Dr. Mohammed, just explain this to us. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, it's a vote of six zero. All right, emergency item two.
Order requesting approval of Unlimited Fence Solutions LLC quote for the installation of commercial fencing at Buddy Bo- Buddy Butts Park.
So move.
Second, we have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, uh, you need any other explanation, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of six zero. Thank you. Emergency item number three.
Order requesting improvement of professional services from Efficient Power and Light LLC to repair equipment at Pete Brown Golf Facility in anticipation of the upcoming Mayor's Cup.
So move. Second.
Okay, we, Mr. Stokes made the motion, Mr. Hartley made the second. All right. Any other questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of six zero, thank you. Now, emergency item number four. I think we understand this is for a, the rental of a portable chiller for the J Train Administrative Building. I think that's, that's pretty clear. So will the clerk, please get this one on the floor?
Councilwoman Lindsay, we need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. Okay, let's go ahead, and what's the, what's the next item? Uh, it's, it's a different department. Let's just take this one. All right, colleagues, all in favor of getting this item on the floor?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All right, all in favor? I love preemptive action. All right, so it is a vote of six to zero. All right, will the clerk please get on the floor?
Order ratifying emergency rental of a portable chiller for J Train Administrative Building from Universal Services LLC.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, passes with a vote of six zero.
Madam President?
Yes, sir, Mr.?
Uh, I moved that we add, add emergency, uh, number five, uh, for the Human and Cultural Department of, uh, equipment and improving for professional service and equipment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, all in favor? It's unanimous, it's six zero, thank you. Clark, would you please get it on the floor?
Order ratifying the provision of professional services in the purchase of various good and equipment and approving payment for same.
So move. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? All right. We have a vote of six zero. That took our agenda items from thirty to thirty-five. All right, now, let's see. Colleagues, we're gonna move now into discussion items.
Madam President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes?
Let me, I'm, I'm gonna hold all my discussion items to the next meeting, and let me s- put on record, because I see media here, that I have no knowledge of anything that were in the council numbers I was saying.
That's okay, Mr. Stokes. It's okay. Gee, I know, Mr. Stokes is missing heaven, missing Mrs. Lee's whispering in his ear today. We get it. Thank you. All right, thank you. All right. I, I, okay. I appreciate you, Mr. Stokes, thank you. All right, now, let's see. We're gonna, and Mr. Stokes has asked us to hold all of his items, so that is gonna be item thirty-three and thirty-four. All right, Mr. Foot, um, item thirty-one.
Thank you, Madam President. The, um, this is J P D fleet status. We had a very, um, good audit committee meeting last Wednesday in which, um, Captain Jemison, I think it was, um, briefed us, um, you know, on the fly on the status of, um, the number of vehicles that the city had, J P D had, and the number that were, were deadlined and inoperable. I was really concerned about that, so I was hoping that we might get some additional information from the Jackson Police Force on, uh, their plan to address all the, uh, vehicles that are, um, out there at the municipal garage, uh, at Michael Avalon.
If I could start, and, and I'll ask that Chief, uh, Griselle, uh, add on to what I have to say. So, uh, part of their, their process for making certain they get, uh, more cars going for their fleet, uh, was what Chief Wade came before you and asked if, uh, he would have the approval of the council to use that money to go towards, uh, outstanding invoices, uh, to various, um, mechanics. Uh, so he plans on putting that hundred thousand dollars to use, uh, so that it will allow them to work on that. Uh, coming before you when they do their budget presentation is a request, uh, so that they can purchase more vehicles. That was one of the, the, uh, priorities within their budget. I've had the opportunity to talk with them and see that. Um, and, you know, when they come before you, they intend on asking, uh, that, that we consider, uh, moving forward on, on many of their, their vehicle purchases that they need. Uh, they also, um, did the auction, I know that I announced that the auction take place yet, or is it about to happen?
It's the twenty-fourth of August.
Okay, they also intend on doing the, uh, the auction of, uh, the vehicles that are housed there, and they often use that money to help support many of their vehicle needs, uh, in addition to other things. But, uh, if I didn't capture anything, Chief, you can go forward.
Correct. Assistant Chief Vincent Griselle, on our fleet situation, you know those cars run seven days a week, three hundred sixty-five days a year. Um, those Durangos and other vehicles not built like the old cars? And we look at the cost of the parts and maintenance that those vehicles have to go back, that supersedes the budget and repair budget that we have to do every year. So even though we categorize a certain amount, our repair bills and wear and tear between tires, oil changes, and everything else supersedes that amount. So that kind of puts us in a hole.
Okay, I went out and visited the, drove around on Sunday afternoon, Michael Avalon, um, area there, and, uh, I was really, you know, alarmed at how many vehicles look like they were completely inoperable, and they're just sitting there gathering rust.
Yes.
That, uh, there is some scrap value and, and, um, the, I just think it'd be, um, smart to go ahead and get rid of those vehicles in whatever the most economical way is, the ones that you're not gonna use or try to repair, and not just leave them there. It looks like a junkyard rather than a police garage site.
Correct.
And, um, so whatever you can do, I've, I, I know there's a number of, of, um, scrap yards in the City of Jackson that, that would probably be glad to bid on them or whatever, but the, the, um, I think it would be productive to take action on, um, you know, just, you know, disposing of in a, in a, in a most profitable way possible of all of the vehicles that you have no plans to repair.
Correct. So to help out with that process, we have propertyroom.com, contractors and legal. Uh, Drew is, he not, yeah, there he is. Uh, we wait on that process to finish legal, so we can bring it before you all to move forward. They're gonna handle all the evidence and city equipment, citywide, that'll help us to bring more funds back to the city.
Okay. I just think, you know, we, we need to be prudent and, and good stewards of the resources we got. Fix the stuff we can fix, and thus other stuff, just don't let it sit out there and rust away, but, but, you know, dispose of it with whatever the proper pro- procurement laws allow.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Um, anything else, colleagues, on that item? Thank you, Mr. Foot. Good discussion. Um, discussion is als- next item is also yours, Mr. Foot. Oh, hotel demolition status.
Yeah, thank you. I, the, I just was hoping to get an update on this. I know the judge has told us to tear it down and, and, um, there was appeal by the owner and other things. Could you bring us up to date on where that is and, and, um, how fast we might be able to get it taken care of? I think it'd be a big boost for confidence, for citizens' confidence if, if they saw that coming down.
Sure. So, uh, what I briefed you on, the council on previously was the status of what was basically the
simply this, I think it'll be faster and I think it will provide some guarantees that protect the city a little bit as well. But so specifically, we'll have an administrative court hearing on August twenty-seventh. My strong inclination, and I can't speak for the administrative officer, but my strong inclination is they will adopt a recommendation to demolish. If that is the case, and I expect it will be, then we will be able to present an order to the council at the following meeting. I think the twenty-seventh is two weeks from today, so we wouldn't be able to present it that day. But two weeks from that date, we should be able to present an order to the council to approve and to order the demolition. In the meantime, planning is also bidding out the price of the demolition that'll start this week. So all that to say, I think mid-September, we'll be in a position where we'll know what it costs. We'll have an order from the city saying go forward. And the only question will be whether, you know, what the timing is for whoever gets the bid for the demolition and the cost of that. And to that point as well, there have been some talks, as you know, I think, with some private groups that are very interested in, in assisting the city with that. We don't know exactly how much might be available, and I don't think we'll know that until we have the bid price. But, but it sounds like there will be substantial assistance provided to the city in that, in that regard.
Madam President?
Yes, sir, Mr.?
Since we'll be in budget discussions over the next few weeks, if the timing of that is, is sufficient, we, that, we can have a special council meeting for the adoption of the council to, if, if that recommendation as we expect.
I'd be happy to call that meeting if we, when everything aligns because I think we're all ready to get that addressed.
That's a good, one, one other issue, and you'll see this, Judge Reynolds will probably enter a new order shortly. Frankly, he's waiting on a little information from me. What I think he's going to order the city to do is also to board up the hotel and fence it protectively pending a demolition. The holdup is the Fire Marshal's Office has some concerns about how to do that safely. And so we're in conversations with them about that. Once we get their recommendations, if we can get their recommendations, that'll go to the judge and he'll enter an order to that as well. It'll be sort of an interim step.
Thank you.
All right, colleagues, any, anything else on that matter? All right, thank you, Mr. Foot. We're skipping thirty-four and, I mean, thirty-two and thirty-three. Item thirty-four, which we did discuss some yesterday, and my notes are, are here about Chief, what Chief Wade had to say. Who else would, whose item is this? Mr., oh, this is yours, Chief, but Chief White's not going to be here.
This, this was simply what I just mentioned.
Yeah.
Where the council?
The hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, yes. Council had put money towards, you know, people who were providing information to help solve crimes. The police department was able to utilize other resources to accomplish that. And so they do have a need for this money so that they can get their cars up and running. Chief talked about it, so this is simply that, that issue.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr., Chief White, did you have anything to add? Okay. Now we have litigation matters. Mr. Martin, we didn't, I didn't, I failed to discuss this with you ahead of time. Do we need to go into executive session on these?
I have two for executive session.
For executive session. All right, colleagues, let's go ahead and do reports, the monthly report of privileged taxes. I saw mine that came through on my email. Did everybody else see theirs? Okay, show of hands. All right, and then also, any announcements, Mr. Mayor?
The back-to-school celebration and supply giveaway is August seventeenth, Saturday, August seventeenth, from nine AM to twelve PM. It is at the Jackson Zoo. Admission is free due to local business sponsorship. This event will include carousel ride, games, face painting, bouncy house, water slide, animal encounters with zookeepers, fire safety education, health screening. We want to thank our donors, Atmos Energy, Cadence Bank, Viola North America, Ninety-Nine Jams, Kixi, Richard Swarts and Associates, Jackson Advocate Newspaper, and the Jackson Zoo. Mayor's Action, please report potholes, traffic light outages, outages, abandoned structures, and other code enforcement concerns, et cetera, to the Mayor's Action Line, which is six oh one, nine six zero, one 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 one. They are open Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM. And then lastly, the Mayor's Golf Tournament is August thirtieth at eight, I mean, I'm sorry, nine AM. And we want to encourage people to come out and support. We always sell out. I always ask Councilman Foot, that I know to be a golfer, to come and play. I'm, I'm waiting on him to show up. Thank you.
All right, well, I'd have to send my son a musted, Mr. Mayor. I'm not, can't do it. All right, so any other questions or comments, Mr. Hartley?
I did want to ask the mayor, would there be a roll-off dumpster day this month?
I will, I will get with Lakeisha about that. I don't have any notes on when that is, but I will talk to her about it. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, colleagues? All right, colleagues, I would take a, a motion to go into closed session for the purposes of discussing litigation. We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into closed session for purposes of discussing, going into actual executive session for the purposes of discussing litigation matters. So we are, we are now, did we vote? All in favor, thank you. Do we have a quorum? Mr. Hartley, raise your hand. Thank you. We have, we have.
I think he's staying. That's true.
We're, all right. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now out of executive session. There was no formal action taken while we were in executive session. Colleagues, is there anything else to come before us at this moment in this meeting? If not, this meeting is adjourned.